Good afternoon, colleagues. Ymina Trentai Saasna, the Slatuda in Guam is back from recess. When we last left, colleagues, we were on an amendment that was proffered by Senator Sabina Perez. There was an objection. I will call for the vote at this time. All those in favor of the Senator Sabina Perez amendment, please signify by raising your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six. One, two, three. Motion fails. Senator Perez, you still have 12 minutes and 31 seconds. You still have the floor.
It is Massey, Madam Speaker. I do rise in support of Bill 277-36. Like I said, it's been, it's long overdue in which we can finally, at least, put into place, I guess, make use of our strategic location to help diversify our economy through infrastructure such as telecommunications. And I really applaud the efforts of the sponsor of this bill to make sure the terms are really worked out. I mean, I see a lot of work went into this bill, and I just ask if I could be one of the cosponsors. It is Massey.
On that motion to add Senator Sabina Perez on as a sponsor, are there any objections?
Sorry, I withdraw my motion, but I'll just work with the sponsor.
On the motion to withdraw, hearing no objections, motion carries. Colleagues, we're still on the main motion. Anyone else wishing to speak on the main motion? Senator Chris Duennas, I will acknowledge you at this time. Minority Leader, you may proceed.
It is Massey, Madam Speaker, and just some short comments. Certainly, I rise in support of Bill 277-36, and I commend the Speaker for all the work that she's put forward in this. When we go back to, really, when you look at it, Speaker, the issue coming down to the legislature to basically do this through law, although we know the Chamorah Land Trust Commission and the board is really constituted, and there is, there is basically parameters to set in terms of properties and leases and the like, but it came to this legislature, and I think this was the right thing to do. Certainly, we've even grappled before, Madam Chair, with certain private autonomous agencies, you know, that have land inventory that was returned and should have been in the, you know, in the bank of the Chamorah Land Trust Commission, but because they've pledged obligations against it and its revenue generating, you know, those revenues don't go to the main purpose of the Chamorah Land Trust. So I think this was, this is certainly landmark legislation in terms of, you know, setting forth the groundwork and putting in place something really tangible in terms of, in terms of the returns to the Chamorah Land Trust. Yet I know there's been a couple of amendments that, you know, have been proffered. They may be good intention, but I just think, I just think that when we go down that road, we should leave this bill as clean as possible so that we can have now meetings as we go forward to figure out how to use this, this roadmap, really, on the key ability to recoup and to use those commercial leases to what they were intended for. You know, Madam Chair, I listened as well on some of the issues of, you know, what the money is going to go towards and how, you know, would there be money, additional resources for administrative purposes and the like? And I think what's important is we vet those policies as we go forward. But as this stands right now, this is a significant amount of resources. And even when we discuss, Madam Chair, of the 600,000 annually and the escalation clause, and, well, you know, that will be limited in terms of some of the resources it can provide to the properties, I disagree with that, Madam Chair, simply because now you have a dedicated funding source. Now you have something that you can go out and market, because for over two decades now and decades going forward, that funding source will be realized annually. You can now take out debt service on that to make sure you can do hundreds and perhaps thousands more properties with regard to what we're recouping here. In closing, in my support of the bill, Madam Chair, I think one of the more important things too is, you know, we definitely have to get the highest and best use of government resources and properties and what this has established, but we also have to make sure that we're business friendly and understand what that investment entails when large companies come to island and choose to do business on Guam, and the future benefits that are going to be reaped from those cables coming into Guam and all the economic opportunities that will abound from that, jobs for our people, more resources and tax resources coming into our government through those jobs and other creation of economic activity that will return taxes to our, to our government, Madam Chair. And so with that, I just wanted to say that, you know, the excellent roadmap that has been put forward is something that is going to yield so many more resources coming down the road, and so I'm just glad, I hope we keep this bill as clean as we can, and then use it as a tool going forward to maximize our opportunities. So once again, I'm looking forward to voting in favor of 277-36. It is Massey, Madam Chair.
You're very welcome. Minority Leader, Senator Duennas, anyone else wishing to speak on the main amendment? Anyone else? If not, I'm sorry, on the main motion. Anyone wishing to speak on the main motion? If not, Speaker, I'm sorry. Majority Leader, Senator Nelson, I will recognize you on the main motion.
One of my colleagues told me to take my time speaking on this bill. Madam Speaker, I just want to applaud the sponsor and her efforts on creating this, this huge legislative act. For many years, for many decades, we have been, we have been allowing undersea cables to come into Guam without any benefit to the Chamorah Land Trust, without any real oversight. In the public hearing, we heard that, that some, some of the government agencies don't even know how many undersea cables are coming into Guam, and they don't know which cables are international, and we don't know which cables are regional. And so, you know, as we move forward into, into the centuries, we need to ensure that our technology is protected, we need to ensure that we are aware of better business practices when it comes to telecommunications, we need to ensure that we are able to complete, compete globally in, when it comes to cyberspace, and also the domains that are within cyberspace. And so a lot of it has to do with also infrastructure. And really Guam, you know, I hear this a lot where, oh, if we don't provide reasonable, reasonable fees and costs, that Guam will be overlooked and they'll go someplace else. And I beg to differ. I think that those type of threats given by certain business conglomerates in the telecommunications industry is an injustice to, to the people. I believe that that's false information, because Guam has a special and unique role in how we address our national strategy. And with Guam being in the second island chain, being the hub into Asia, being the farmost territory within the Indo-Pacific command, it's, it's huge. And so it, I, this bill is so comprehensive, we could dissect this for days, and, but I believe, especially with the sponsor, that this bill is something good for Guam. I'm confident that if we find any challenges or any setbacks when we start to move forward in applying this legislation, that we, that the sponsor will be vigilant and, and address those challenges. And so I rise in support of this legislation. I thank the sponsor for her hard work, her due diligence, and definitely the, the amazing amounts of research that she had to go through, and also the history of her being a lawyer really does this piece of legislation a great deal of justice. So thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're very welcome. Majority Leader, anyone else on the main motion? If anybody, if nobody else wishes to speak? Majority Leader?
Okay, thank you, Madam Speaker. I just, I have an amendment, sorry, and it's just to, a motion to reconsider the actions on the body on the Sinagustine Amendment. So there's been a motion to reconsider the actions of the body on the Sinagustine Amendment.
Is there, are, there's, there's an objection. All those who wish to reconsider the actions of the body, signify by raising your hand. Yeah, motion fails. No? Failed. One, two, no, I didn't count, Tony. Three, four. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Madam Speaker, I request that you do, I saw one of the senators raise their hands before you jabbered.
On the motion, on the motion to reconsider the actions of the body on the JSA Amendment, there was an objection. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Three, four, five, motion fails. Okay, on the main motion, Speaker Terlai, you may, you may close. I understand you have an amendment, ma'am. Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So before I close, I'd like to make two amendments. One is to add cosponsors. I move to add Senators Telo Tite Gueye, Senator Sabina Perez, Senator Talina Cruz Nelson, Senator Chris Duennas, and Senator Joanne Brown. I want to thank them for being at the hearing.
On that motion, are there any objections, seeing or hearing none? Motion carries. Thank you, Speaker, you're still?
Thank you. My second amendment is on the drive, and it's regarding insurance. So it's pretty much to clean up the insurance language. This is with the help of our legal bureau, our legislative council, and so it doesn't change any of the amounts that are required, it just, it just changes the terms so that they're very consistent and hopefully less disputes regarding insurance. So we are requiring a significant insurance being taken out by these companies.
Thank you.
Line 14, page 12.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. On the amendment as proffered by Speaker Terlai, I see Senator Joanne Brown, you are recognized on the amendment.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I did want to ask Speaker in moving her amendment, and I see the requirements with regards to insurance, but I do want to ask with regards to lines 14 to 15 on page 15, where it says, "As an alternative to all other requirements of the section's licensees may provide self-insurance reasonably satisfactory in kind and amount to licenser." I want to understand exactly what that means, and with regards to the capability or the ability of the Chamorah Land Trust to determine what that is, because we're saying you've got to meet all these requirements, but if you don't meet these requirements, then, you know, they can self-insure. What requirements and what amounts are we talking about for self-insurance, and what, what are they going to deliver to show they have that capability?
Thank you, Senator. Speaker Terlai, would you like to yield?
I think the only difference would be that instead of getting insurance from a separate company that they self-insure, and I think even the government of Guam is considering doing that, this is done, I don't, it's going to look in the exact same amounts as what, what is required. I don't think it allows them to waive that, but it, they're just going to, instead of going to a separate company to do it, some companies have this capability to do it themselves, to self-insure.
How do we, how do we determine what that is and in what amounts? I mean, you know, the government of Guam's a little different, you know, it has a significant revenue source to operate on, you know, because you, we're putting all these requirements, I have no issue with that, I think it's very good to define that, but this particular section, I'm not sure, how are we defining what their capability is for insurance? I mean, I can say it can self-insure, but do I have the financial wherewithal? Does the commission have the capability to determine whether or not these companies have the financial wherewithal to self-insure?
Thank you, Senator Brown. Speaker Terlai, would you like to yield, to further yield? Yes, no, I think this is an industry practice, not just this industry, but insurance industry that they do this, and some companies even on Guam that are operating now are self-insured, and they are able to do that, and they are able to meet their requirements by doing that. And they just set that up within their corporation structure so that they're able to do that. But in this case, I think it's no risk to us because the amounts that they are going to be required to insure will be identical. And, you know, obviously, if they are going to depart from a, I just don't think that they're going to be able to depart without showing significantly that that is a reliable source. There is an industry way to do that, and now, I'm not an insurance expert, but I know, if I was Chamorah Land Trust, it's easy. If they're not coming to me with, you know, a notable insurance policy that has these requirements, or they are self-insuring, then I would, I would seek legal counsel's assistance, and we have the entire Attorney General's office at the disposal of the Chamorah Land Trust.
No, I understand. Again, I just, I just want to, to find, I'm a little open with this, and I mean, I'm not going to not vote for the bill because of this, but I think it does bring up concern as to whether or not the land trusts would have that ability to determine whether or not this company or companies would be able to self-insure, because they might say, well, financially, we can self-insure. But who's verifying whether or not they have the financial wherewithal to do that, right? I mean, I can say something, doesn't mean I necessarily have the wherewithal to back it up, so I'm just raising a concern. Does, if I can ask, Madam Speaker, I wanted to ask Speaker Terlai, would you have any problem if we actually remove that language and have them meet the other requirements that you have listed and simply take it out?
Senator Brown, I will ask the Speaker. Speaker, would you like to yield to that inquiry?
No, I wouldn't, I wouldn't agree to that right now. I just think, as I said, this is acceptable industry practice, not only in this industry, but, but in other industries, and the risk to Guam is not any greater. I'm sure there are guidelines. The thing is, this is the requirement, I think, that has been put in place as well with the other contracts, or for sure for the GTA contract that, that was just allowed, and so just would like to, to mirror it. We tried as best as possible to mirror that language.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Senator Brown, you still have the floor.
Well, thank you, Speaker. I appreciate Speaker Terlai responding. I simply want to bring that up as a concern, and certainly, I mean, I'm pleased that we are moving forward with regards to standards concerning the Land Trust Commission and the lease of land trust property for telecommunications purposes. But again, this also requires the land trust itself, and again, we want to see the land trust succeed. I think we've seen far too many years of issues with regards to mismanagement at the land trust, both internally, externally, politically, if there are fingers to get their hands in the land trust jar, people have been there. And while we're allowing them this opportunity, certainly raise the revenue that we have always hoped that we would be able to do, because we understand the list is long for basic surveying of property to infrastructure that everyone talks about, that we feel is necessary in order for these properties to be developed for both, for both residential and agricultural purposes. But the land trust also needs to step up, and I have to tell you, certainly for the time I have remaining here, I'm going to want to see that, because I've not seen it to the level that I feel a level of comfort. And especially the fact that we have not heard of the appointment by the commission itself of a permanent director to run the Chamorah Land Trust. I think we want to ensure there's somebody there that has their full-time focus and capability on running the land trust, because there's so many issues that we know that they have inherited since land trust was created. I mean, when it comes to money and land, boy, if you want to see a pot that's mixed up with a lot of issues, boy, you're going to find it with that. Lot of fingers that shouldn't be in the pot, the misuse and abuse of land trust lands that were intended for our people, and the many thousands of Chamorahs and descendants that will never have the opportunity to take advantage and, and be able to live or farm or raise their families on land trust land that they themselves also would be just as entitled to because of the abuse and misuse of land trust property. So I do have an expectation, I think our people have an expectation, I think all the taxpayers on Guam, be they Chamoral descent or not, want to see proper compliance with the land trust. And now that we pass this bill, and if it becomes signed into law, and they're given all these additional authorities, by all means, we're going to want to see accountability in the ability of the land trust to properly administrate its operations, including this additional layer of authority that we're granting them. I would hate to see, as we did not too long ago, that these matters have to come before the legislature again, and we have to vote on these lease agreements, because the land trust is not geared up in its operations and its capabilities and its level of responsibility to properly execute these agreements. I certainly hope they do it properly, I hope they do it publicly, I hope they, they do it with proper accountability for what their responsibilities are at the land trust, because we want to see things improve and move forward. Otherwise, 20 years from now, as it was 20 years before when I was here, we're going to continue to hear about these problems, and I think we want to grow beyond that. And I certainly hope that in granting them these additional responsibilities, they're going to step up to the plate and hit it out of the park. I think that's what we'd like to see for all our government departments and agencies, and certainly, I appreciate the efforts of Speaker Terlai in moving this issue forward and improving on, on the language that's been contained in this particular bill. And like I said, I hope to see great things from the land trust, but at the same time, I think we also need to ensure proper oversight and review until we have some level of comfort that the land trust is operating properly and is operating at the level of priority that it should be. With that, Madam Speaker, thank you for the opportunity to comment on this bill.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Anyone else on the amendment? Senator Sinagustine, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Just, just curious, because as the, my colleague has spoken about self-insurance, and I've been trying to promote captive insurance, and you know that, I'm just curious, are we leaning towards that? Because once we start here with self-insurance, we need to be ready to move on to make sure, and if we want to talk about the government, the government of Guam is different from your industry, and we want to make sure that the companies are willing to do that, self-insure themselves, fine, great, they have the ability to cover their liability, but we don't need to make sure that it, it's ready to go, so we can go beyond the telecommunications, so that other businesses that want to self-insure, then go for it. But are the insurance company ready for that? Are we ready to start saying to everybody, "Self-insure yourself"? I'm just curious about that, and that's all. And maybe the, the author of the amendment can explain that further, and then we can move on. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Speaker Terlai, would you like to yield to that question?
Sure. I just want to clarify too, that no one is forcing any of these companies to self-insure. It is an option, and the option was included in this bill, because it is an option that is included. On the other side of the cable, which is in Grover City, we pattern a lot of this after that, because these companies are agreeing to it there, and, and that's why I say it's an industry standard, but it's not just an industry standard. Many industries are allowed to self-insure. But regardless, this is language that all the companies have seen, and all the companies did not object to, not a single company said, "Don't allow him to self-insure, because, you know, you're going to, you're going to get ripped off on Guam." I don't believe that can happen, I don't believe that will happen unless we are absolutely negligent and we fall asleep at the wheel on this thing. And of course, that is a possibility, it's a possibility in every single agency, but, you know, we are expecting better. We are, we are trying to enter a global market, and we are trying to create global standards, and this is to me part of those global standards. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Speaker Terlai. Senator Sinagustine, does that suffice? You still have the floors.
Thank you. The only reason why I asked that is that former colleague, Senator Dennis Rodriguez, I co-sponsored with him to do captive insurance, self-insurance, and that wasn't successful. And I'm just trying to make sure that we know where, how we're toeing the line. We say, "Self-insure? Great, if you can, do it." We're talking captive insurance? I hope that when finally that bill is to come up, the captive insurance, that we can do, and we can move on. And if the companies are willing to take the risk, then so be it. I'm in full support of anybody who wants to put themselves in the front line. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
It is Massey. Senator Sinagustine, anyone else on the amendment? Anyone else? Are there any objections? Anyone? Are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none? Motion carries. Speaker Terlai, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and as to captive insurance, I just want to note, yeah, I think we do have captive insurance on our books, it's one of those QC programs under GIDA, where I think it was the late Senator Pangolinan who sponsored that we would allow captive insurance on Guam, it just did not take off like they expected, but there are some companies. All right, so my two amendments are passed, and I'd like to just close on the bill now and thank, of course, my colleagues for all your participation, your interest, and your suggestions in making this bill better. You know, Guam, we are able to get involved in this on a global scale, in this telecommunications, global telecommunications industry, and that's because Guam has unique factors, as my colleague said earlier. We have, supposedly, we have consistent power, meaning, you know, GPA, power. They need power to run these things, in fact, they need massive amounts of consistent power, and some of the higher costs that they incur is getting this power and getting it consistent into these landing stations. They need a rule of law that can be relied on, and so they like Guam, because Guam has a United States rule of law, and that makes it business friendly, as my other colleague had stated earlier, and I agree with that. And of course, we are most unique because of our geographical location. We connect to Southeast Asia, Australia, New Zealand, the United States, and we did, you know, we have listings of these global connections, from Guam to Japan, Guam to Australia, the Philippines, Taiwan, South Korea, China, American Samoa, Hawaii, and then the Micronesian, the regional ones, Micronesia, Palau, Philippines, Indonesia, South Korea, Hawaii, Fiji, New Zealand, Australia. There are, I counted, 26 different cables. There are five landing stations on Guam. So we are allowing, by this bill, additional landing stations on, or, you know, additional submerged licensees, that would result in additional landing stations on Guam, and each of these times six is what we are allowing. And of course, you know, I want to thank the telecommunications industry. We have consensus, and that's, I want to say, one of, one of the biggest feats in this whole thing was to get consensus, for a large part. Not everybody's perfectly happy, but we, we got consensus from these telecom industries and from everyone else who we engaged, and that is, so I, I believe, while I am not an expert in the telecom industry, but I do believe that these companies and the role we put them in have put a check and balance on each other. And that's why the bill was written as it is, with a lot of input and a lot of transparency, really, with these, with all these companies. with all these companies. So we have succeeded in getting consensus from the industry players, and we have done our homework. So we weren't, we didn't allow them to fool us. And we put an end, by this bill, to the sweetheart deals that have been going on prior. This is very important to me. One of the reasons I came to legislature was because of the sweetheart deals that we watch over and over. And then we see that the Chamor Land Trust at the same time, and I agree with my colleague, the Chamor Land Trust suffers from some very serious lack of resources, lack of different capacities. That's why we are doing this. Every single dime that is collected from these revenues, from these licensees of subsea cables, is going to go into the Survey and Infrastructure Fund, not into their operations, but into the surveying and infrastructure. The lack of resources to conduct those surveys has been cited as one of the primary roadblocks to the issuance of residential and agricultural leases on Guam. They've dedicated which lands are priority, and they can leases out almost immediately if we can get them surveyed. And we want to bring in this infrastructure to our lessees there at the Chamor Land Trust. So this will allow them to have enough money to actually bring in infrastructure, living standards instead of substandard living. The CLTC is doing some work to find additional funding, including federal grants with the USDA, to survey and develop its property, to begin the issuance of leases, complete design of six residential and six agricultural subdivisions, to increase the number of compliance inspections, assist applicants with the research to determine eligible beneficiary status, and of course, continue the processing of applications. It's not fast work by any means. And I have tried my best, with the help of my colleagues, to have oversight over this Chamor Land Trust. And I think prior to me, senators before me have done the same, and we have had to sometimes drag them kicking and screaming. But we are trying to work together, and we are all going to work together. Instead of beating each other up, we are going to lift each other up. I really believe that. This is the type of bill we need to lift them up and lift every single lessee or potential lessee that is depending on them, to lift them up to the housing that is so desperately needed, desperately. The recent housing report in May noted that the median price for a half acre of land is $85,000 in 2021, and in the first three quarters of '22 was $93,000. That's raw land. The median cost for single-family dwellings went up to $428,000 in the first quarter of 2022. Interest rates on home loans are up from 3% two years ago, and as of this May, it was 5.1%. So we are in a housing crisis. And before we lose any more young families to off-island because they cannot afford a home, we have to do our best to put this infrastructure in to get the best value on this land, get the best value for all of our resources on Guam, and lift each other up and meet that need. And we are able to do it now. We are lucky. We are sitting on an excellent geographic location. And I think we've got good partners. So this legislature does not have control over the cost of property or loans or the cost of housing. But we can bring in infrastructure to these vacant lands that the Chamor Land Trust has been holding as trustee for the people of Guam. The CLTC has 11,704 paid applications with 2,905 leases awarded. That's the demand. That's just the demand for Chamor Land Trust. Resources for surveys and infrastructure is the largest hurdle to getting applicants into the residential and agricultural leases. And with uncertainty about the future of Guam's economic recovery, inflation, high fuel costs and utilities, and this ever-increasing demand for affordable housing, this is just one effort. But I think it's a significant effort by the Guam Legislature if we can act united to meet this need, to secure resources for the Chamor Land Trust in order for them to continue the mission of land restoration. And don't forget where that all began. It didn't just begin with these 8,000 applicants in 1995. It began with land takings in 1950, in the 1940s. That's where it began. So I want to, again, thanks the industry partners that have partnered with my staff. And I want to thank my staff because this is one of those bills where I was pretty intense. And it, you know, it's every single word matters. And so they had the patience to review draft after draft after draft, language from one company, one company, one company, and see what we can do lease after lease after lease because we compared all those prior leases for $5,000, $5,000, you know? And it was very bold. And I want to say something, it just came to me. I would not probably have been this bold by myself to say, "We're going to jump from $5,000 a year for six cables to $100,000 landing and $100,000 per cable per year." That's very bold. I was only that bold because I showed my dad the lease of Grover City. And he said, "What are you waiting for?" And I love that generation because they were bold and they were so adamant that we were going to get what we deserve on Guam. And we were not going to sit back and let anybody take advantage of us. And I truly believe, if we just reflect on that a little bit, that we can work together. And yes, there's so many issues, so many problems that we could beat each other up. But I say, "Stand together. Let's stand together. We are in a global world now, and we are standing up in that global world. And we are saying, 'No, no more.'" And so I hope that this will continue with many other industries and, you know, and I want to thank, again, my colleagues for all your help and support in this. I will be making a motion to vote on this earlier than normal in our session. That's why it was put first on the agenda. Because one of the leases that we're discussing is actually expiring at the end of September. And I would like for the Chamor Land Trust to have this as a tool that they can use in renegotiating that lease. And so that more of our leases will be on the same tract. And in order to make that happen before the end of September, I'd like to get this to the governor as soon as possible so that she can consider approving it and putting it in place for the Chamor Land Trust Commission. So situs Massey again to all my colleagues. Oh, yes, thank you.
On the motion, Madam Speaker.
Oh, yes. The motion is to place Bill Number 277-36COR, the Guam Undersea Access for Homes Act, GUAAHA,